Good evening and welcome to the April 10th meeting of the Ithaca Common Council in Committee of the Whole for our special topics meeting of this month. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Given the robust public participation tonight, I will read the emergency evacuation notice for any first timers. In the case of an emergency evacuation, we will take one of two exits, the one that most of you come through, or one back here, and wait at the trees on the same side of the street on South Kyuga and Green. We do not cross Green unless it is absolutely necessary. Those with restricted mobility, in the event of emergencies, it is best to move to one of the stairwells and first responders will arrive to aid you. In the event of other emergencies, you'll be notified at that time. We want everyone to be aware of their surroundings and offer help when it is not to your own detriment, as you are your own best advocate. All right, with that, quickly, we'll just move to the review of the March 13th special topics session minutes. Can I get a movement on one of those? Moved by all the person, Hannah Sharp, seconded by all the person, Kumar. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the minutes? That carries 10-0 with all the person Letterman absent. All right, we have three public hearings this evening. We're going to take them in the order that they are listed on the agenda. So the first will be a proposed zoning amendment to establish a zoning permit process. Can I please have a motion to open the public hearing? Moved by all the person, Winn, seconded by all the person Shapiro, all those in favor of opening the public hearing? That carries 10-0. I have received one comment for the zoning permit process. Am I missing any comment cards before we begin? All right, former alderperson Donna Fleming. Donna, I know you know this, but for public edification, you have three minutes once you begin speaking.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm Donna Fleming. I've served on common council for 10 and a half years, and I've been a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for 14 months. I admire the Chair of the BZA, David Barkin, and I admire the way the BZA functions with respect for each other and for applicants and with careful regard to the regulations of the city. I urge you to pass the zoning amendment that would establish a zoning permit process. I think that planning staff, and especially Megan Wilson, has done an excellent job of analyzing trends in BZA appeals and crafting a new process that would be a huge help to property owners. The BZA often hears cases in which owners of properties, usually owner-occupied older houses, want to do something like replace a deck, add accessibility features, or extend exterior stairways. The properties are often already non-conforming. BZA members ask some gentle questions, approve the appeal, and wish the applicant luck with the construction. The ending is happy, but the applicant has wasted some time and money. In the proposed amendment, cases like these will be approved by staff and make the renovation much simpler. Still, many other cases that do not fall under the strict criteria will still be heard by the BZA. I believe that passing this amendment will help to make city operations more efficient and better serve constituents who are trying to make simple improvements to their properties. I urge you to discuss it thoughtfully and to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no other comments submitted for this public hearing, so I will at this time entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by all the person, Winn, seconded by all the person, Keel, all those in favor of closing this public hearing. And that carries 10-0. Thank you, colleagues. Moving to our next public hearing, the proposed short-term rental ordinance. May I please have a mover to open the public hearing? Moved by all the person, Saint Perez, seconded by all the person Shapiro, all those in favor of opening the public hearing? That carries 10-0. Thank you. Please do correct me if I pronounce any of your names incorrectly. First, I have Russell Posegate. Welcome this evening. Just as a reminder, you have three minutes once you begin speaking. And please do turn on your microphone.
Thank you. Sorry, it's been a long day. Hi, I'm Russ Posegate. I live at 107 Wood Street. My wife and I own the property next door to ours, and it has been a short-term rental and a long-term rental over time, over the past five to six years. Firstly, I want to say that I've been paying the short-term rental tax faithfully since I learned about it two years ago, and it's relatively common knowledge that compliance with this tax is very low, and I don't think that's fair. I truly want Ithaca to be an amazing place, and I want to do my part, including maintaining housing and also bringing out-of-towners into Ithaca to support our economy. My property taxes are already substantial, and this is another cost. Additionally, I noticed that this tax is designed to support the conference and event center, and as it is being completed, my short-term rental is potentially going to be shut down. Research shows that cities that have 100% banned short-term rentals have seen rents go down by about 1%, but visits to the city from out of town have been substantially reduced by a much larger percent. This lack of visits represents work for local community members, business for local shops and restaurants, and also tax dollars that the city doesn't collect. I'm skeptical that the $5 or $10 or $15 per month that a renter might potentially save is going to offset the loss of business, tax dollars, and employment. My impression is that local business owners haven't been consulted about the impact of short-term regulations. I haven't seen anything from business owners, so I would love to see some reassurance that they've been consulted. And I just want to speak a little bit to the fact that registration, I feel like, is actually fair for short-term rentals. I think that's important for the city to keep track of them, but an inspection process does sound a little bit like overkill. Can the council point to any incidents that inspections are a reaction to? I'm not aware of any injuries or reports of unsafe short-term rentals. I'd just like to respectfully request that the whole community be part of the process and that fairness to everyone be considered. I'm asking that the council consider making incremental changes to present to present policy in a way that preserves the benefits to residents of short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Sarah Davis, and following that, I'll have Zach Winn. Welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
Have Airbnbs in this city had a negative impact on the health and the safety of their guests or this community? I don't think there is evidence for this. Will eliminating the majority of Airbnbs currently operating in the city have a significant positive impact on home and rental prices or availability in the city? I don't think that this has been established. Are the primary causes for the current housing market the result of a broader economic and demographic shift in the region? Is this something that city legislators can control through regulation and taxation? To what degree will this legislation negatively impact the livelihoods of people who depend on this income to support their families? What is the scale of the impact of this legislation that it will have on tourism? How much money currently being funneled into local restaurants, bars, wineries, businesses by Airbnb hosts who persuade thousands of visitors to come and stay here and spend their money will go elsewhere? How many potential visitors to this city left with little rental availability will opt for other towns in the region with more lax rental legislation? If the answer to these questions is unknown or would take more time and work to get them, I think that we need further investigation to move forward with this legislation. Thank you.
Next, I have Zach Winn, followed by Jorge DiFendini. Zach, as you know, you have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. My name's Zach Winn. I live downtown. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed short-term rental legislation. Individual private property rights should not be violated, and this proposed law will do exactly that. People have a right to do what they please with property they own. One of the express goals of this law is to force people to put their properties up for rent as apartments under a standard lease, a less profitable endeavor with far more complications than an Airbnb-style arrangement. The types... These types of rentals include non-payment of rent, and the cost of evictions are a few of the things a person can avoid, in addition to the fact that income generated by short-term rentals is being used by many people to offset the crushing tax burden placed on property owners by the city. The city has also proven itself to be a poor steward of taxpayer funds. Regardless of how the funds from the room tax are designated to be distributed, money collected by the city risks being siphoned away for plans and projects that are not beneficial to the citizens of Ithaca. Listen to the 71% of respondents who want no short-term rental law. They deserve as much, if not more, consideration than the hypervocal faction of individuals who are hostile to property owners and landlords in general. If you want more apartments to become available at a less expensive price, consider loan ring taxes instead of increasing them. Thank you.
Next, I have former alderperson Jorge DiFendini, followed by former alderperson Donna Fleming. Jorge, as you know, you have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. Jorge DiFendini, Eddie Street, former alderperson for the 4th Ward. I'm here to speak today in favor of the short-term rental policy. I want to give a lot of thanks to our city staff who worked incredibly hard on this. I was part of a lot of the sort of engagements with the larger community, whether they be landlords, short-term rental owners, renters, and I could see that the city did a lot of engagement on this issue and took a lot of their feedback into consideration. I think we wound up with a holistic policy that is really sound, allows for short-term rentals to exist within the city while addressing our very serious housing crisis. Speaking now as a renter, I can speak to the idea that this is very essential for us to pass. As the former representative for College Town, student housing in the College Town neighborhood is continuing to creep and creep further downtown and is making it very hard for everyday renters and Ithaca townies to stay in the city-state and the neighborhoods that they've lived in historically. So the short-term Airbnb rentals are increasingly fighting over affordable housing that we continue to lose at a very rapid rate. You're going to hear, as you already have, from some folks saying that this is going to be bad for business, this is going to drive short-term rentals out of the area and hurt our local economy. The question I would ask to you is, what is more important? Ensuring that our low-income renters, who make up a majority of not just this council, but also of our city, can afford to stay here, or that some businesses that are predating on a lack of regulation can continue to exploit the city? So I'm in strong support of this legislation. I hope you guys pass it. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Up next is former alderperson Donna Fleming, followed by Katie Sims. Welcome back.
All right then. I'm still Donna Fleming, and I live in the city of Ithaca. I've served on common council for 10 and a half years. When I was on the Planning and Economic Development Committee, we had a lot of conversations about short-term rentals, and we looked forward to seeing a good piece of legislation to restrict them in the city. As we knew and you know, there's a high demand for housing in the city. Helping to meet the demand entails many different interlocking programs and policies. The city has done a tremendous job in the past 12, 13 years to promote and facilitate development and to increase the supply of housing, including affordable housing. This legislation, the short-term rental legislation, is another important element of a solution, insofar as it will help to make housing units available to people who want to live in Ithaca instead of to tourists. It does, while still allowing homeowners to generate revenue from short-term rentals. Furthermore, it is enforceable, unlike other versions of short-term rental legislation. As a traveler, I'm a huge fan of renting houses or full apartments for a few days at a time. For a family or group of friends, it's much more comfortable and convenient than a hotel or a regular bed and breakfast. But I understand that the proliferation of short-term rentals in any city only exacerbates that city's housing shortage, so I was completely sympathetic when one of my favorite places, South Portland, Maine, enacted short-term rental legislation a few years ago. The little house that my traveling friend and I liked became owner-occupied, and we found a nearby rental on an owner-occupied property with a detached accessory unit. So similarly, in Ithaca, there will still be a place for short-term rentals for residents who want additional income from their properties, and I hope that we'll see other properties that will become full-time homes. Please give this legislation very thoughtful consideration. Ask staff and one another well-informed and thoughtful questions. I hope that after your discussions, you will pass this legislation with very few changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next, I have Katie Sims, followed by Monica Hargraves. Hi, Katie. You have three minutes once you begin. If you could just turn your microphone on. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Sims. I'm a tenant in Northside in the 1st Ward, and I wanted to speak in favor of the proposed policy. I think that's the research and care that has gone into the policy in the last few years is really admirable. I saw the last draft of the policy when there was like a public input session about it, and I think it's only gotten stronger since then and really focused on the goals of protecting our housing stock in the city, giving renters and homeowners a real chance at having an affordable place to live. The housing market just like keeps getting more and more untenable, and I think there's been like this idea kind of passed around that like it won't lower rents, so what can we do? Or like it'll only lower them a little bit. But rents are going up extremely fast. Like if my rent went down 1%, I would be shocked and excited. I like expect, I haven't got my lease renewal for next year yet, hopefully I will. I expect it's going to be another increase, like it was last year. My rent is 63% higher for no real increase in quality than it was in 2021, although I've had to move twice. And we need to stop to it. And so all of the, you know, when we look at like building housing is the way to do that, protecting housing that we have right now, that we don't need to build, that doesn't cost millions of dollars, is a great place to start. And, you know, these are our homes, right? There are things that we like only get to do in our homes. They're the places we build our lives around, that we spend with the people that we love, where we do the things that we love, where we relax, where we like, you know, feel safe, and we should protect them and not turn them into hotels. Thank you.
Next, I have Monica Hargraves, followed by Francisco Valloy. Welcome. You have three minutes once you begin speaking.
Thank you. Is this on? Okay. Thanks for holding this hearing. I am here because, not because this proposal affects me directly financially. I own my home, but I don't rent it out. I have no expectation of owning something else and renting it out, so this proposal is not, doesn't really affect me. If someday I travel and want to make a little bit of money on the side, the new proposal would absolutely allow me to do that, so that would be fine for me. I have benefited from the current availability of short-term rentals. There's one, two doors down from me, and I had my family stay there at Christmas, and it was perfect. So useful to have that owned by someone local, not a big distant corporation. So that's been positive. The thing that brought me here tonight to make the trouble to come to the hearing was because I went to the open house that was at the library, whenever that was, a while back, just to learn more about what the issues were. This is clearly complicated, and you can already hear from the different sides that have been presented. There's a lot, a lot of competing interests and needs that are really important, and regulating this is clearly complicated. But I just happened this afternoon to read through the new proposal because there was a lot of traffic on the listserv about, you know, this going on. And honestly, I was shocked when I read the new proposal because it seemed to me that the new proposal just wipes out a middle option that was there when I last was current with this at the public meeting at the library. The middle option is the one that allowed people who are non-resident and own another building but to rent it out, you know, for a limited amount of the year. There was like some admittedly difficult to monitor but sort of complicated option that at least kept that somewhat alive. And I have the sense, I guess, that difficulty of monitoring is part of what led this, what I consider this middle option, to just be eliminated. But it honestly feels drastic to me. It feels kind of like throwing the baby out with the bathwater. One of the things that I like about Ithaca as a community is the commitment to buy local and support local entrepreneurs, and this would make that really difficult for people that have invested in another property and fixed it up and maintained it and managed it as a rental and provide a really valuable service to me as a local community member and certainly to visitors to town. So I'm, I was just stunned that this disappeared. I can't believe there isn't some other way of parsing things so that that option for local people with that entrepreneurial spirit stays alive. And it feels a little bit like a wealth transfer. Like all those people that invested in those properties, poof, their ability to continue to do that is going to go, and I'm not quite sure who's going to benefit from it. So I am concerned about what will happen to the availability of short-term rentals. There's no question in my mind that's going to go down, and that affects locals and not just tourists. And what's going to happen to the people that have kind of carved out this niche and work hard at it to provide this valuable service? I'm concerned about that, too. So I hope, I wish you luck in considering this. It's clearly hard, but I was really concerned at the change that I saw between the public hearing and this new proposal. Thanks.
Next, I have Francisco Valloy, followed by Teresa Alt.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I've been living here in Ithaca for over 25 years. I came from a terrible country, work hard, save my money, raise my family here. And I don't think I had $20 million to build a building like this one and get a tax break on top of that. But I can build up a down payment for a small house, try to do something by myself, not hook up myself on government support because I don't like it. I want to be free. I want to try to do my own thing. I don't want to be attached to government welfare. This kind of business that we're trying to do here gives us that opportunity. You're supposed to give opportunity to people, not taking it away. I don't have $20 million, like I said, to build a huge building. I don't think anybody here has that kind of money. And I believe in free market. You guys are doing, if you pass this proposition that you're trying to do, you're going to be picking winner and loser. The winner are going to be the big hotel around here. The loser are going to be the little guys that are trying to do, to make a living here in Ithaca. Our kids had to move every time that they graduate because nothing else to do here. Don't take that opportunity away from them. They want to stay here, but they have nothing to do here. You got to bring jobs, not taking it away. Thank you.
Next is Teresa Alt, followed by Anita Graff. Teresa, you have three minutes once you begin.
I'm Teresa Alt of 206 Eddie Street in College Town. And, you know, I will confess that I've never stayed in a B&amp;B. I've heard good things from other people. I have no interest in starting one. I can't even take care of one house, let alone another, or a part, you know, keep things nice enough for guests. But anyway, the city, I believe, did a lot of, the planning department did considerable study of the situation in the past few years, so to say that it's sudden is just wrong. But when things finally came up this, you know, today, I read the legislation. I think it is really good. Anybody who has another house that they thought they would use for short-term rentals can now make it into long-term rentals. And if you want to, you know, share a part of your own property, you can still do short-term rentals, so there will still be short-term rentals. The legislation looked very good to me.
Thank you. Next, I have Anita Graff, followed by Genevieve Rand. Welcome, Anita. You have three minutes once you begin.
My name is Anita Graff, and I have been renting long-term here in the city of Ithaca, renting two people since 2010. I have a variety of long-term rentals. I've also been a super host on Airbnb now for the last few years, and I love what I do. I have a real passion for this. I really like it. So I have a lot at stake here, and I'm very much against the proposal. At the last council meeting, I heard a community member say that the short-term rentals have to be stopped because A, tourists don't matter, and B, these units need to be made available to long-term renters. First, I'd like to say tourists do matter. They are the literal friends and family of local residents. They are also the customers that patronize the local businesses that support the jobs for a good portion of the city. They're also traveling hospitals, staff, researchers who come for conferences or short-term assignments, festival attendees, families coming for weddings, reunions, funerals, and other life events that are not on anyone else's calendar. And there are even local individuals and families who are displaced by a variety of emergencies like fires, floods, mold remediation, sewer backups, et cetera. Second, providing short-term rental options in the city is a value, and it does not mean that we don't care about long-term housing demand. A city has a variety of needs that need to be met. We fill a need that is not met by hotels or long-term rentals, and that demand is all year long and in private accommodations, not a bedroom in a stranger's house, not with a shared kitchen. The vast majority of guests want privacy. The vast majority of guests want privacy. They want top notch accommodations with the feel of a home, full kitchens, et cetera. And they value the interesting and different experience of an Airbnb over a corporate hotel. Don't get me wrong, hotels and motels are great, and they serve their niche. Airbnbs are just a different niche and an important one. They are an amenity that people want. The day that demand falls, we'll be forced to change our businesses. That's how it goes. Legislatures, legislators don't need to strong arm this. There has been more housing units brought online in recent years than ever before, both by the city, outside developers, and housing builds on campus. Thousands of new units. At the same time, interest rates have tripled, mortgage rates increased, our taxes at the slightest round of assessments are skyrocketing. Inflation is also having a major impact on the cost of repairs, renovations, utilities, et cetera. This is the absolute worst time to make a draconian decision to curtail the options of lodging providers. There is much lip service made to involving stakeholders in decisions. And while I appreciate the construct of a public hearing at a council meeting like this, this is not enough. Council needs to convene a committee with ample representation from host stakeholders to discuss this matter. I would be very happy to serve on such a committee and welcome your invitation. I think there are just too many issues that you are not taking into account, too many variables you are not even aware of.
Thank you. You can submit the, I, I have to enforce it equitably. I'm sorry. You can submit the rest of your comments to council in writing, council@cityofithaca.org. Thank you. Next, I have Genevieve Rand, followed by Sarah Curless. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thanks. I'm a tenant living in the third ward, and I want to speak in really strong support of this policy. I used to, when I was working restaurants, have a side job cleaning Airbnb's between hosts. And I just, a lot of them were in the Fall Creek area, and I remember just being so shocked about how I was also trying to get out of a bad housing situation at this time and, you know, wanted to live there. Everybody wants to live there. And I remember being so shocked cleaning these Airbnb's and realizing how many places that could be apartments were just permanently these like short term rentals. And that was really frustrating. So I think it's very good to regulate it to owner occupancy. It's kind of weird hearing people here be like, oh, you're going to destroy it, and there's going to be no short term rentals when it's like the policy provides a way to do it. It just requires that it's a primary residence and that it's owner occupied, which seems like a good balance. I've stayed in Airbnb's. I like them, too. But there's a balance to be reached here. I also want to echo what others said about the policy clearly being really well researched and written by the planning department. There's like, as somebody who kind of like works in this field, seeing the, the requirement for the listing of the permit number on the app listings, that shows to me that somebody was thinking seriously about this and meeting with experts and people have done it in other cities. The change to get rid of the, to get rid of the sort of like middle ground option. I want to like be really clear that I, I think that that's a really smart policy change because if you make it so that you can have these like buildings that are just, that are short term rental only, that aren't owner occupied during just like a few months of the year, then the whole economic incentive that takes apartments off the market to just be short term rentals is that with only a few months of work out of the year, charging hundreds of dollars a night, you can make more than you would having it be a year long, like regular residential rental. So it would still create those things that are permanently off the residential rental market because a few months, you can't have something where there's just no lease for a few months of the year. There are a couple other things that I wanted to say that maybe could be considered for this. One is requiring liability insurance, which is going to reduce the disputes between guests and owners. And then a big area, there's, there's kind of like, a big area is how the city is going to interact with the platform. Like a big sort of unnamed thing in the draft policy is how these like tech companies are going to be involved in both the like enforcement of the policy and like the city's work, how they're going to be required to not facilitate unpermitted listings, how they're going to communicate with the city.
I'm sorry, that is your time, but you're welcome to submit the rest of your comments in writing. Thank you. Next is Sarah Curless, and then last in this public hearing is Adam Hart. We have the real Sarah Curless, I see.
What?
I said, we have the real Sarah Curless.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thanks. Yes, it is me, the real Sarah Curless. I am a tenant on South Hill in Ward Three in the city of Ithaca, and I support this policy. I've rented in Ithaca off and on since 2010, and I've worked in housing support for tenants professionally in this city. I know intimately the difficulty of finding available rental housing in the city and that there are hundreds of unhoused people in the city living in the jungle, the shelter, hotels during Code Blue, which is ending on the 15th, by the way, when 60 people will become homeless again this year, as well as couch surfers. I have supported many tenants who are unable to find new housing after having a terrible landlord experience, dealing with domestic violence, or trying to escape being unhoused. The vacancy rates here are famously low, and there's always a push to build new housing, which I support. But there are also people who cannot buy homes here because of the existence of lucrative short term rentals, often owned by people from out of town. For these reasons, I support the planning department's edits to give permits for owner occupied units only. They have done extensive research on what has worked for other cities and state and around the United States. With this policy, there can be lower rents with increased supply and less desperate demand. Personally, my rent goes up $25 a month every lease, every year, which doesn't sound like much, but that's $300 a year on top of the $10,500 a year I already am paying without building any equity. There are also several hotels here which would appreciate the business, I'm sure, and that are actually regulated and provide jobs to people locally. We do need more housing here, but we also need to free up available housing for people who actually live here long term to fight the housing crisis that exists here now. A very similar policy has gone into effect in September 2023 in New York City, and that has freed up many units for tenants. And it's, there's a similar policy in Hudson Valley Cities as well. I would like to see more housing inspectors and code enforcement staff be hired, as has been suggested by the planning department. And I, I do understand, I get that housing is very expensive to buy and maintain here. But that is a larger problem that needs to be addressed in other ways, not by limiting housing availability for long term residents. So thank you, and I hope you will pass this.
Last on this item, I have Adam Hart. Welcome. You have three minutes. Once you begin.
Hello. My name's Adam. I've lived downtown for about seven years now. I'm a renter. I'm here to support the proposed short term rental policy that limits owner occupied buildings, or puts a limit to only owner occupied buildings. Rents in Ithaca are far too high and available units are far too low. The hoarding of homes, or the hoarding of houses for non-residents in a housing shortage, in a, in a housing shortage is untenable. For short term visitors, people that come to visit Ithaca and spend money, we have hotels. I worked in a hotel for, for the past four years. It's always a fight to try to get rental, or like people to come in, book rooms. So this will only help support our local businesses, which also employ Ithacans, which contribute more to Ithaca than people visiting here. Long term, that is. Yeah, and with that, I just want to, I don't want to add too much more, but I hope that all of you strongly consider this. I'm in favor of this, and I hope all of y'all push this through. Thank you.
That concludes the submitted comments for this public hearing. Can I please have a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by all the persons Shapiro, second by all the person Keel. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? That carries 10-0. Finally, may I have a motion to open the third public hearing for the Restore New York Eight grant application, moved by all the person Kumar, second by all the person Shapiro. All those in favor? That carries 10-0. The only comment I have for this was submitted by Teresa Alt. So Teresa, you are recognized, and you have three minutes. Once you begin speaking.
So once again, I'm Teresa Alt of 206 Eddie Street in College Town. And this, I really want to thank a certain official who I think I'm not really supposed to name for responding very promptly this morning to an email query of mine and realizing that he should send the response to all of council and a few other people. The question was, 24 units are proposed according to the legal notice, but at what end? And apparently they are all supposed to be affordable. And I'm not going to quibble about exactly what level of affordability because if I've done a good deal of work on housing in this community, and there are terrible needs. Of course, worst of all, for the very lowest income people, people with no income, but right up to young professionals who can't find places to live. So as long as it's in that kind of somewhere between the bottom and let's say, area median income, it's useful for the community, and 24 units is not so very many that it will completely skew a market. So I do think this, this grant proposal is a very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, moved by all the person Shapiro, second by all the person Matos. All those in favor of closing the hearing? That carries 10-0. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, public. All right, at this time, we will now move to general business. May I please first have a mover for the proposed zoning amendment to establish a zoning permitting process, a zoning permit process, excuse me. And as I often love to remind council, you are more than welcome to summarize the proposed legislation rather than reading it verbatim. May I have a mover, please? All the person Matos.
Whereas state law in section 176-6 of the city code requires that a lead agency be established for conducting environmental review of projects in accordance.
Apologies, older person. I think you're, I think you're intending to move the item on page nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You are. While you, while you look at that, I will, I will note, because the all the person is correct. When we, if, should this move out of committee tonight, when this goes to council, council will have to declare itself lead agency. They will have to be, there are a number of other resolutions in there that council will have to adopt in sequence. However, those are procedural at committee. We can refer those through, and the item in question is on page nine of your agenda packet.
Because I'm on.
Or I can recognize another older person if you prefer.
Just the ordinance, which part?
You can just summarize the ordinance.
Okay. Be ordained and enacted by the common council of the city of Ithaca as follows. Section one, Article one, general provision, section three, definition of chapter 325, zoning of the city of Ithaca municipal code is hereby amended to add the following definitions. Director, the director of planning and development or designee zoning permit and authorized issued by the director to permit the enlargement of a non-conforming structure which is used as permitted. Want me to continue to read or?
Summarize.
Okay. Like the whole section. Okay, so pretty much it gives the director of planning and development the ability to grant zoning permits, correct?
Ministerial approvals, exactly. Yeah, so the, as the older person said, the proposed motion, the proposed ordinance creates a ministerial approval process by which commonly sought and low variance issues are approved by the director or their designee. Is there a second to this ordinance? Seconded by all the person win. I understand that the deputy director of planning, Megan Wilson, is joining us via Zoom. Hi, Megan. Do you have any preparatory comments? Otherwise, I think council should be very well acquainted with the presentation that you gave last month. You're welcome to provide any of those comments, or council can just begin with questions, whatever you prefer.
Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I'll turn in that case to council. Any questions on the proposed ordinance comments? Seeing none? All right. Well, thank you, Megan. I think, and that, with this, I'll, so the motion on the table is to refer this to council for a May.
May first vote?
Yes. Okay. And that has been seconded. All those in favor of referring this to council for a May first vote? And that carries 10-0. And then we'll turn to Megan's second item here, which is the proposed, recognize the city manager.
Might it be helpful to clarify general business or consent? I think this has to go to general business, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. Because this item and the next item are ordinances with resolutions that require us to declare lead agency and all those things, they will be referred to general business. Thank you. If I could please have a mover on the short term rental ordinance, and again, just a summary of what that details. All the person Keel.
Thank you, Mayor Cantelmo. The resolution in question puts additional restrictions on short term rentals in the city of Ithaca. The major changes are that A, corporations and other similar agencies or institutions cannot own or operate short term rentals. It also increases restrictions on the use and posting of short term rentals in the city of Ithaca. Is it good enough for you?
Is there a second? Seconded by all the person St. Perez. Again, Megan discussed this in great detail. Any questions for her on the proposed ordinance? All the person Keel.
Do we have any data on what percentage of short term rental owners are residents of Tompkins County or the city of Ithaca?
We do not. Once we start contracting with a third party, we'll get more information about the specific addresses and owners of those properties. But right now, when you look at the short term rental listings, you don't always have the exact address. We know for those who pay the occupancy tax, we have that information, so that gives us some. But the, again, that's such a small percentage that we know that that there's a lot of others that we don't have the information for.
I have another question.
I had to hand on this side of the room, I thought. No? Okay, all the person Fabrizio.
Do you have any estimate at all how many houses this would potentially put back into long term rental?
We imagine that it'll probably put, we, there's usually about, I think, 400 unique listings of short term rentals, and I do imagine that several hundred of those units would have to go back into the long term market or be used for another allowed use, as many of them are not currently someone's primary residence.
And can you explain what the inspection process would be?
Absolutely. It's the same as what should be happening right now. So this is not a new requirement. I think that's often missed. Any rental housing in the city of Ithaca, whether it's long term rental or short term rental, is required to get a certificate of compliance from the building division. So that's the same type of inspection that a long term, you know, someone who rents a long term leased apartment or leased home. It's the same inspection that they're required to have. Right now, there's no distinction, and we're not proposing to create one. So that all, all rental housing, and I believe that's state law as well. The rental housing will have the certificate of compliance. It's not a new, new system set up. The building has, the building division has housing inspectors that will carry that out. And as part of implementing this program, there will be a new housing inspector that will help bring many of these properties in compliance, because again, a lot of these properties do not have a C of C right now.
All the person Shapiro.
I'm thinking about Patrick's question and wishing that we knew how many STR operators locally were also living locally. I feel like it should be important to know how many people in the city of Ithaca were about to. I feel like it should be important to know how many people in the city of Ithaca were about to impact. Has there ever been any discussion in policies like this that you're aware of, where there was like grandfathering in of, in some capacity?
So typically, when we would enact a zoning change that would change a use or a requirement for a property, it applies to those that are meeting the current requirements. So it could be the case that a property that has a current CFC and has been paying occupancy tax could potentially have established rights to continue use as a short-term rental. But again, they have to meet both of those requirements and have evidence of that that's been completed to date. And again, that'll be a very, very small percentage of the short-term rentals in the community.
Can you further clarify that for me? Because there was a gentleman here before that talked about the house that he owns nearby that, you know, and he was saying that he pays taxes and he does all the things that he's supposed to. Would he have an avenue to appeal and continue his non-owner occupied STR?
If he can document that he has maintained a certificate of compliance and has paid the short-term rental occupancy or the occupancy tax for hotels and short-term rentals, you know, up through 2023, I believe is what we have reports of now, he may have established rights to continue.
Thank you. Hold on, all the person. We have other hands. All the person Brown.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out and speak. I really didn't have my mind made up, and I said I was going to be quiet today. But I want to thank everybody who spoke because they made my mind up. But my question is, so right now, we don't have, we are looking for inspectors. We need more inspectors, if I'm not mistaken, right? Yes.
We are currently hiring and will need to hire another inspector as well.
And if we, if we begin to do this inspecting of all these, you know, this, will we, will that mean we need to? So right now, we have how many? How many inspectors do we have right now?
I think Lisa is probably there. I think we have five housing inspectors right now. Trying to count.
The planning, the planning director has stated, we have five housing inspectors. We're hiring one. I'll add, while she walks up to the front here, that council also wisely, I would say, funded a person for the enforcement of our short-term rental ordinance in the budget last year. But I'll recognize the director of planning.
Yeah. And that really was my question. Will this mean we're gonna need, and it's already in the budget, so-
You already put it in there.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah. And thank, once again, thank everyone who came out and speak. That's why I think it's so important to have community, public comments, because sometimes we're, I don't know about others, I'm on the fence, but tonight helped me make up my mind.
All the person win.
Thanks, Megan. So people forget these exist, but there is still a mechanism for an old-school bed and breakfast, right? There's a permitting process for if, you know, one has, and my wife went through this process with her own home. So we did a home stay, but, and not a separate building. But if you do have a second property and want to turn it into a bed and breakfast, that process remains.
That's correct. And actually, we are going to take another look at that definition, and I'd like to update it a little bit, but that, you're absolutely right. That'll remain a part of our code, that you can get a special permit through the planning and development board.
Thank you.
Before I recognize all the person Fabrizio, are there any members who have not spoken? Who wish, all the person Saint Perez, and then all the person Fabrizio.
I'd just like to clarify if this would restrict revocable living trusts, the estate planning tool, like would they be counted as a type of trust? I feel like they're a good argument to be raised.
We did talk a bit about this. Right now, we propose that it would, they would go to individuals only. The permits would go to individuals. It is, if we run into this as being something where we see a need, that would be something I would bring back to you all for your consideration.
Understood. Thanks.
All the person Fabrizio.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the possible grandfathering mechanism. Could you explain what that process would look like potentially? Who would, who would they, who would people be making an appeal to? And who would be making a decision about that?
Typically, with other zoning matters where someone would have a, have, would be claiming that they have an established right, they would need to submit documentation to the zoning administrator to review, to see whether that meets the criteria, whether the dates are correct and that kind of thing. And once that would be the case, they would be noted as having an established right to continue the use. I will note that it would make the property a non-conforming use, which does have downsides under zoning. It makes it more challenging to do any type of expansion of your building as such. So if someone has, has a short-term rental now and is eligible for a short-term rental under the new system, I would encourage them to go that route rather than seeking the established rights. But there might be some that that's not an option for.
All the person Keel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. I think for me, I just did a quick Google search, and it looks like the housing stock of short-term rentals is like somewhere around 700 in Ithaca of apartments or homes. That doesn't include rooms. And for me, I feel like I'm more concerned with the possibility of more people owning one home than the possibility of some people owning two or more homes. I think the only part of that for me is that if we do have Ithaca residents who are, own a second property and are renting that out, you know, I think we've seen, we've all seen the exceptions that have come in today and yesterday about people with extenuous circumstances regarding their short-term rental properties. I'm wondering if there's a way that we could put an appeals process in to appeal to common council for things that are not, that are maybe outside of the rules, but could still go to common council. And that way, you have, for Ithaca residents who want to go through that process, they can still have an alternate route. And that way, that could also stop an Ithaca resident from owning, you know, 25 houses. Just an idea, and I wanted to hear people's thoughts on that.
I just note that there is an appeal process built in to this ordinance. It is, because it's part of the zoning ordinance, the appeal does go to the Board of Zoning Appeals as a, and they would have to go for a variance from that and meet the criteria for a variance. I'm not sure what, in terms of just you wanting to make an exception to the regulations, I'm not sure what policy provisions that would need. And I think we'd need to speak with the city attorney's office more about that.
I'd just add, I appreciate the all the person's efforts and creativity. I would certainly caution against any appeals process that might be as capricious as one that sought specific exemptions or overturning by the elected body. I think sticking in line with the BZA or ministerial approvals might be a more legally defensible position, not an attorney.
I'm an attorney, and I agree.
All the person Shapiro, I see your hand. I want to just, was there a hand over here from someone who's not spoken? No? Okay, all the person Shapiro.
I guess I just want to say again, or maybe for the first time, but generally, I understand why we're doing this, and I generally support what we're doing. But I think over the past week, it has been, I've felt, I guess, the current status of people that live here and how it's going to affect them. And I guess, I guess it would be nice to know that there is a real, I mean, you're already saying that it's there. I guess I am, again, supporting. Like, it seems like, there's the gentleman I was referring to. It seems like people that describe themselves in that capacity where they've been compliant, they've been paying taxes, they've been doing everything they should be doing, they live here. It seems like it would be fair to give them an opportunity to appeal, to keep the status as they have it, while limiting anything new. And I also maybe just want to take, because I know I probably won't get another chance to talk around this subject, but I just want to point out because it did become important in this policy that we use terms like owner occupancy. And I just hope that value stays with us when we start looking at like ADU policies. I think owner occupancies are, we're stating it here. It's something that's important to us. I just hope we continue to state that. Thank you.
I strongly oppose that.
I know you don't.
But that's orthogonal and a completely separate issue. All the person win.
So I think the issue with grandfathering all the existing STR-
Just sorry to pick on you. I've heard a couple of times, maybe we should just use established rights as the more correct terminology for this.
Thank you. Right, so if we employ a mechanism of established rights, you know, the problem is that many of the existing STRs are owned by out-of-town investors. And so I have great sympathy for the residents of Ithaca who do have, you know, one extra home. And it's not nearly as egregious as, you know, when that's outside investor or a private equity firm that has dozens of these. And so I think in an ideal world, I would be open to some kind of carve-out for that. But I wonder if Megan can speak to the difficulties of enforcing something like that. And I know you talked a little bit about this when you presented the new proposal to us, but maybe you can dive in a little deeper of what led you and staff to what we have today.
So we were really looking at what the policy goals were in terms of housing as the top priority, which was outlined for the policy objectives. And, you know, found that the previous policy that would allow rental of non-primary residences for a short period of time, two things. One is that it would take housing units off of the market because it's some, there's a very, there's a tipping point where it is more lucrative to rent a unit as a short-term rental for, say, a few months and let it sit vacant the rest of the year than to provide a long-term housing unit. So we didn't want to see units go off the market completely for short-term rentals. The other thing was the day limits, the season limits, those are completely unenforceable. So even if we're saying we're only going to allow something to be used as a short-term rental during the summer months, maybe when the students aren't here, it's very difficult to enforce and monitor and make sure that's actually what is, what is happening with the unit. And then, again, the unit comes off of the market for residents of the community. So we were looking at what could be implemented to achieve our goals. And that's how we arrived at the point of doing primary residences, because it's easy to confirm. The residency requirement ensures that someone isn't buying several properties to use as short-term rentals. And I don't know if you recall back from the presentation we gave last month, if council would like to allow short-term rentals and primary residences, there are a few things we might recommend that you consider. But the direction we were given was to focus on the primary residences as a means of preserving housing for long-term residents.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of moving this item to the May 1st council meeting under general business? That carries 10-0. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I will turn and recognize the city manager for a briefing on the city's encampment policy. And the, yep, okay, perfect. I was gonna say, we have a visual aid as well as the memorandum that was circulated to council at the beginning of the week. So with that, city manager Mullenhoff.
Sure, thank you. Just want to quickly review the different items that were included, that were circulated to you, that were sent out in the updated agenda. We had a summary memo that walks you through the history. We've had several updates. We've been addressing this issue for quite some time. It's gone through several different reviews. So that summary memo hopefully helped you kind of get a sense of the context and where we were and why we arrived at this place. Then you had a draft operations plan. And we also included, just for your reference, the two previous policies that council adopted, the one in September, that was the temporary authorization of a location for encampments. And in December, the framework for response. So just a couple of highlights from the memo to review with everyone. The, what council passed in December of '23 directed, at that time, an unknown city manager, and now I'm sitting in this seat, to develop a proposed operational plan and to incorporate a response protocol into the policy. So that's what we've been working on internally since January. We had a good interdepartmental team. And we went kind of section by section through the framework that was adopted by council in December. And then really tried to take a look at, well, what will that look like in action? How would we actually implement this policy that was passed? So that is what you will see in the draft operational plan. That was like that second piece in your packet. We're going at this with a phased approach. As you can see, we tried to put a graphic together that would make it kind of easier for people to understand how we're going to do this. So what we're calling Phase 1 is a specific protocol around two different types of locations of encampments. One is if an encampment is established on what we're calling actively managed property. And the other one is for emergency or hazardous. We don't have emergency or hazardous on this chart, but that was outlined in the response plan. And then what we're calling Phase 2 would be what's considered lightly managed city property. So I'm going to kind of walk through both of the phases and try and turn so I can see this document here as well with you. So what we're calling actively managed, actively managed is something that has a pretty obvious alternate use, something like a walkway or a city park or a sidewalk or the commons or something like that. And active, another condition of actively managed is that it has staff that, hence the term, actively manage that space all the time. And it has another very obvious public use. So what that looks like is, you can see over the side, we have kind of, and again, this is also still in draft form. It is our intent to put some additional information together and create a location on the city's website where all the information related to what we're doing related to the encampments can kind of live, so everybody sees all the different pieces to it. So at some point, we will identify a more formal process to help the public understand if they want to report something, that we would have a better process for doing that as well. So we've got an initial notification that would come in. Then we would identify what kind of property it is. And then you can see it can kind of spin to different places. So it would go to actively managed. And that would be a much shorter timeframe for a relocation because obviously, an actively managed site has other uses. And so we would have the report and the referral. We would get community partners involved right away with that. We would post a notice to vacate. That would be a 24-hour notice. And if the campers were there, we would verbally have conversations. We also will attach resource flyers. All of the different posting notices are live links in the response protocol. So if you clicked through the response protocol, you can see what the different posting notices say. The posting notices, we also were deliberately included, the 211. In talking with the community partners, we circulated the draft plan with a lot of the people that would be helping with the response. And their recommendation was just to simply use 211 as the easiest way to refer people to. So that has all the contact information for 211 on the posting notices as well. And then that step three would be the removal of the encampment. We're still working on exactly how the storage of critical items would work, but we wanted to make sure that nothing that was removed of personal property, things like identification- things like identifications or wallets or medications or things of importance um that we took care to ensure that those were stored. And then there will be a a notice, what we're calling a property retrieval notice. So to let people know that if we did remove something we felt was valuable, that they would, how they would be able to retrieve them. So that is phase one. The other piece of phase one is not on this list because this, that would not presumably not be coming from the public in. It is something that has been deemed um emergency or hazardous. And we'll talk about that um in in a minute. Actually, I can go over that now. So this is something that we would implement um immediately or we would work on it um based on any potential uh notice of violation that the city may receive from another municipality. So you can kind of read the description of when it's deemed emergency and hazardous property, what we would do. This um could end up being more complicated just based on what's the location, what's the hazard, what are the things that we might have to do to remediate the site? So typically, when you've been given a notice of violation, the the next step for that would be for you to develop not only a plan on how you would clean up the location, but then also a plan on how you would prevent that location from getting to the same condition that it was before. So that's what the, what the, in terms of an emergency or hazardous site that's been identified by an outside agency, it, we might not have to do exactly the same thing, but the normal process with that would be is we would come up with whatever, we would comply with whatever the notice of violation said. So that is kind of what we're, what we're able to do in phase one. And it's really helpful to the city to have something to be able to respond consistently to the same kinds of things that come in. What we're talking about for phase two, this is what we're calling lightly managed property. Um lightly managed property means property that doesn't necessarily have uh an a a another use. Um, and again, we're talking only about city property here, not property, you know, not other private property. And what we are, we just know that there is not a way for us to do everything that we want to do, nor can we comply with the desire that was expressed by council in December without some sort of additional formal um coordinator or person to really help connect. The the city has pretty limited resources in terms of what we are able to do for supportive services, but we have a lot of really wonderful and willing community partners that want to help the city with this piece. And so our recommendation would be to take the funds that were set aside by council last year and create what we're calling an encampment response coordinator. That would be the person that was really responsible for managing all of the different moving parts to um handling uh when encampments are reported and most specifically on this kind of lightly managed property. So right now, the only actions that we would be taking would be if we get report of an encampment on actively managed property or if we get a notice of violation. And so then that just kind of brings me to also update you on a couple of recent actions, which are related to both of the categories that we talked about for phase one. So some of you may be aware that there was a couple that was sheltering under the bridge. I think some of you even brought that to our attention. We had um multiple conversations with the couple, did um some checking into housing status, taking a look at what possibilities were for them. We had several community partners that knew the people, um have some ongoing conversations with them about relocating. And um ultimately, once we had, this was kind of happening in parallel to as we were developing this exact protocol and the posting notices. So we were able to last Friday, did a posting notice. Because this was sort of our first trial with this, we decided to do that posting notice as a ninety six hour posting notice instead of the twenty four. And then we made specific contact with community partners who did go in over the weekend in order to help with some cleanup. The city provided um some trash bags. And so then as of uh yesterday morning, they have voluntarily relocated. Then the second thing to update you on, I did send an email around that the city has received an official notice of violation from the county. And really, the next step for that is to follow um what is required by the notice of violation. Um, this was actually a dual notice because this property, you actually can't get to this property unless you get through railroad property to get here. So we are um gonna be working directly with the railroad property owners as well as the city team and coming up with both a cleanup plan and then an ongoing remediation and preventative plan for that area. So we'll just keep you posted as that, as that moves forward. I think those are all the highlights. I wanted to just save as much time as possible for any questions. And I don't know if mayor or anyone else, I have several of our staff here that worked on this and we're all here to answer any questions you might have.
And city manager, I'll just quickly, I know the answer to this question, but for council and public edification, the notice of violation we received, uh does it, I, forgive me if I missed you say this, but does it have a uh financial sanction associated with that this time?
No, it doesn't.
Thank you. Um, at, I'll invite up Nels and Mike um i- in case there's any questions that might be directed.
And Lisa.
And Lisa, I'm, oh, Lisa, you're, I thought you were back there and I missed you, apologies. Um, I see all the person Shapiro.
I appreciate that what you're putting together is uh something that the last council asked you to do. So you're following instructions in that way. I have a couple of different questions. The first, I'm curious, with regards to city owned land, why don't we just have a fence as been discussed? Why don't we put up some bright lights as been discussed, some security cameras that have been discussed? Why don't we just secure the land that we own? Why are we thinking about staffing people? Why aren't we thinking about building ways of protecting the property that we own?
Um, I'd be happy to tackle this one, actually. Um, we do own quite a bit of property uh throughout the city. And a lot of it is, you know, municipal right of way, a lot of it is, and some of it is, you know, more inaccessible areas. Um, so one of the things that we've been doing uh is in areas where this is uh, you know, been a larger concern. We have been putting up some fencing and and, you know, some sort of attempting to physically exclude people from being able to to move into those areas. And Mike might be able to actually speak a little bit more as to the specifics of that. Um, but you know, we we are uh one of the biggest lenders and the owners in the city and each each parcel has a little bit of a different uh, is a little bit differently situated, if that makes sense?
Anything dead on that, Mike?
Sure, so we are um, we met yesterday with the railroad and uh we went out to the property uh that's on the um, well, it's on the railroad property, but we also own a tiny piece of that with the railroad. And uh as Deb mentioned, the railroad got a very similar letter to the one that we received from department of, or from Tompkins County Health. So uh in that letter, we have thirty days to come up with some sort of plan. And that plan is supposed to include a timeline and a method for preventing it from happening again. And so uh we started looking into it. One of the first things that we want to do is put up a fence uh parallel to the railroad tracks. We were looking at where that might go. We may have to take a few trees down in order to do so. The logistics of getting a fencing company out there are a little bit tricky. There's not a road that it really lends itself to that. And then we're just trying to figure out, you know, a timeline of of how we clean it up and and the timing of it. Uh, late this afternoon, we also got a a email from the um DEC because we have some um, there's environmental concerns, of course, and similar to the to the concerns that the Tompkins County Health raised. And um, but any work that we do in the water, and a lot of debris is in the water, we need a DEC permit for. So uh they're hoping to set up a meeting in two weeks. We're, we're of course going to invite the um Tompkins County Health so that they can understand also what sort of restrictions and timeline that the DEC may put on us uh in order to get these permits. But we're, you know, we're in the process of formulating a plan. The the amount of debris and garbage out there is incredible. There are, I would say at least a hundred bicycles and, you know, torn apart. So out there, there's propane tanks, there's a number of hazards that we're gonna have to figure out. We're gonna have to work with Tompkins County Solid Waste, the health department, the railroad. Uh, there's a lot of coordination that goes into this, so um.
I can appreciate all of that. I I think what I was hoping to see today was how we're going to remediate that land. Um, and I am aware of the uh, you know, we talked about it last meeting, what the county was thinking of doing. And then they kind of took a step in that direction. And I'd like to see us keep our land clean um and keep our water clean. Um, the second point I want to get to, and then I'll I'll um, I'll give up my time, is that part of what I'm also suggesting is I'd rather see us invest in structures that keep some of our land that we own safe than new staff in the agency, new staff in the government. And I do not support the idea, or at least not yet, of hiring some new sort of homeless um coordinator, especially, and maybe Deb can clear this up for me, especially as we're hearing about four hundred thousand dollars going to five new outreach staff that are supposed to be doing street homeless outreach. And we have the opioid money that went into the RFP for intensive case management, also for homeless folks. So I'm I'm concerned that we're thinking about, even though it was in the budget beforehand, even though prior councils had opinions on this, I'm concerned that we're thinking about investing more money in staff. I mean, there really needs to be a cleanup. Now the county's getting on our butts about the cleanup. I'd like to see us like clean up.
Let me, let me just clarify and make it really clear. So first, it was forty thousand dollars a year for a part time person. So it's not a full time person, and I don't believe there was even benefits allocated to it. And it is not a supportive services. It is more a land management DPW type position that can just coordinate all of the very complicated elements of figuring out what has to be cleaned up, who has to be available. It it, there isn't anyone, it isn't anyone's job right now to manage encampments in the city. It's just kind of falls to a hap has, it's like a hot potato that staff just kind of toss around from person to person. We really need one person that sits in the middle of coordinating the variety of people that need to be available in order to manage the the response. So it is not, um those other positions that you described are the crucial partners that we need that person to be connected to so that when we are working on the mechanics of the removal of trash and the storage of property, that the human beings that are associated with whatever circumstances they found themselves in being outside to for shelter, um that they are getting the absolute best support that they can in order to transition them into housing. And so those other positions you referenced that are managed, that we we just participate in in terms of funding, we're funding partners and community partners with them. Those positions are crucial in order to to give give us that other missing piece that the city does not have those type of agencies, nor could we ever stand up a department that would allow us to do that. Um, we also would be incredibly interested, and I think I referenced this in the memo, in working with the county on any initiatives that are gonna get us to more shelter space, a low barrier shelter, um any opportunities to add um transition housing in, we're exploring all of those options.
Next, I had all the person keel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm, so I have a couple of things to say. First of all, I've been going in the encampment since twenty twenty and they are an incredibly dangerous place to be, um both for the people who go in there to provide emergency responses, but also for the people who are living there. Um, both, you know, uh physically dangerous, emotionally dangerous, basically any amount of danger you can, any type of danger you can have, you've got danger there. I am dismayed, though, that we have been having this conversation about encampments for this long and we haven't been kind of like what David's saying, haven't been actually making moves towards infrastructure to support the people who are living there. We don't, as far as I know, had any moves towards, you know, emergency housing provided by the city that um an increase in emergency housing stock. And the question still lingers in my mind that we will be, you know, removing these people from the place where they are residing. And I'm still unsure of where they're going to go. You know, they don't get in their car and drive somewhere else. And I'm just, I'm confused how we got to this point um by having a, you know, a notice from the DEC and a notice from the county to clean up this area. And we still don't have a plan about where these people are gonna go. That bothers me. And I also recognize the environmental challenges of uh the encampments and and the, you know, nobody should be going in there, nobody should be living in spaces like that. Um, but it feels like we're, we're kind of scratching the surface of this larger problem and refusing to really address kind of the internal issues in terms of um figuring out what what we're gonna do as a government to support people who are really in need. So, yeah.
I don't know if I I want to put Nels on the spot, but one of the things that has been working as a parallel process to this, and I also just want to clarify, we are not currently relocating lots and lots and lots of people. That's what I would identify as that actively managed property. Right now, all we really are doing is setting up a system to be able to handle if something else were to occur, like if, you know, we had that couple that was basically living on the waterfront trail, which was that actively managed space. We wanted to make sure that we did everything that we could to get them to a different location. So I think what you're referencing is maybe a larger group of people that's currently living on lightly managed city property, which we don't have all of the pieces in place yet. So we can't necessarily do everything in the way that we want to do it because you're correct, there are not enough places for everybody that might need to be relocated to live. So that is going to take more time and definitely partnership with the county. But while this has all been going on, there has been um a mini surge and we have additional permanent supportive housing that's coming online right next door. And I don't know if Nels wants to talk a little bit about the continuum of care and the work they've been doing with the mini surge as well.
Before, just before you do, Nels, can I also just um clarify my understanding that um while it may have very well been suggested by many that the city establish uh direct units themselves within the exclusion zone, uh that my understanding would be that doing so would violate the state's campground regulations, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, Nels Bone, I'm the director of community development for the Ythgarb and Renewal Agency and co-chair of the continuum of care for the county and the city. Um, you're actually right, there is, you know, we we only have a partial answer. We're really implementing a land management policy. It's not a homeless response, what the city's doing at this point. The city is collaborating and working with the community of care to try to figure out a better solution, which is to get people into housing. And the council has supported a lot of efforts to expand that supply of permanent housing. Asteri across the street being the the most recent one, which is gonna open up forty units for formerly homeless persons to move into in May, we hope is the date. Um, and that community of care has been working on a surge process to identify people who would be eligible to move in there, working with the ones who want to move in. And we think there're gonna be many of the people who would be otherwise unchallenged homeless be moving into those first forty units. So that will help, but you need to keep building more and more affordable units that have supportive housing for uh set aside for homeless to to keep up with the demand. Uh, we're in a rising cost market, which doesn't help, so we have to keep working on that. And most of the new affordable housing projects that have been funded do include some units set aside for homeless housing. So continued support for that is one way to help find a solution um to minimize the number of people that don't have those choices. Uh, the community of care also were, is working uh with the, with the partners on other strategies, you know, trying to prevent people from being homeless in the first place is important to kind of minimize that inflow. Um, because it's not just unchallenged people that can't find housing. Um, because it's not just unsheltered people that can't find housing, it's people who are in the shelter as well, the shelter system. Um, and they're, they're technically not unsheltered, but they're also not, not homeless either at the same time. So there's a big need in, in that area. But the real bottleneck has been not enough permanent supportive housing for people that, to move into that they can afford. So the nice thing about the Astere project is those rental units are available with rental assistance and supportive service assistance. Um, so they come ready to go. There's no, no, the cost to the individual is 30% of their income. If they have no income, it's, it's, it's zero essentially. So there are some options for people to move in there and then have supportive services to, to help them. The big bottleneck has been not enough permanent supportive housing in the community.
Next person, I have, I have a queue. So the next person on my list is Aldo Person Matos.
So this is a clarifying question for Deb. The railroad property is lightly managed area? And then like behind Lowe's is our green zone, correct? Or?
Nope. Nope, nope to both. So the, so the railroad property, I, yes, I guess technically that's lightly managed, but that hit a different category once we were served a notice of violation for that space.
But that would be actively managed now, like?
No, we're just now having to comply with the requirements once we've been served with the notice of violation for a cleanup. So that's now become its own category that we are now working to mitigate based on the requirements of the violation notice that we sent out. And then, um, behind Lowe's would be, I guess, considered lightly managed. So if you look in the third document that was included, the, the September Council policy, a map of the area, that's the, that's, that's what we would are considered, that's what we considered the temp, the area that was temporarily authorized. Yeah.
Okay. And so then my second question is, um, being that Code Blue is ending in like five days, like there's gonna be 60 people who would, who essentially are losing some form of housing, where are we at with like hygiene and health resources, like being provided, um, to those folks in the green areas?
So we are hoping that there is more work to be done by the supporting partners so that people, so that this is not a first choice for people to relocate to. Like, we know that a lot of people come out of the shelter system. Um, they either go back to couch surfing, or they go back to friends, or they go back to family. So, and I don't know if Nels knows anymore about the specific strategies that the county and the continuum of care use in order to ensure that people, so it's, it's not actually a goal to direct people to that area as a first option when you would come out of a shelter. It would be, let's figure out what your barriers to housing are and do everything that we can in order to see what, what options are available for people before we would recommend this. We are running up against really significant, you know, just sort of competing legislative restrictions on what we can put in an area that then kick us up to being compliant with a campground regulation. And that's a New York State regulation, not even a county regulation. There is sanitary code, which I think the county would be willing to, to work with us around, but the closer we get to making that, we, when we use the term amenities and we use the term campground, then we would be really kind of bumping up against the law. So our goal is prevention. Our goal is to put resources into supportive services and partners. And I think that it is not actually the city's goal to have people living outside. It would be the city's goal to put as many resources as we have available to us and as many partnerships together so that no one's falling through the system to a place where they feel that the only option that they have is to live in this space.
Next, I had Aldo Person. I have Aldo Person Brown next.
I was playing. I said I was gonna be long. I have a few things for, I'll, I'll start off with, um, for one, I'm, um, after being on council for the past two years, um, it's, I'm, I'm a little disappointed that all of a sudden, when we've gotten these, uh, uh, warnings from the county and other places, it's important that you got 30 days to clean it up. And Zach, when it's coming for the last two years, and I'm talking about council members who've been here, has been talking about what it looks like out there, what people have had to live in out there. Just recently, I went and visited after I got a tour from Nate's Florals residence and seen how it looks out there. And it's, it's just a, un, un, it just feels uncomfortable to me that we've had a jungle and we've had some of these situations that we're talking about today, that's been out there for years, and what is gonna be different because now it's this real important, we gotta clean it up. Um, and at that meeting, many of the, uh, people who lived there was talking about it, calling environmental in different places. And now that the county is giving you a, a, a warning or restriction, so that part right there is, um, really bothering me that we've taken, um, steps because we were, um, pretty much forced right now. But, um, winners here too, who've been coming telling you about the bikes, telling you about the garbage, telling you about the, the unhealthy conditions that's been out there. And I've heard it for going on two and a half years. And to sit tonight to hear that the county have warned you, and now you got 30 days to do something about this, and it, it, and, and I'm not gonna go on further about that, but that, that is, that means that all the, um, people, y'all knew people were living out there in these conditions. Even, even the conditions that people who are homeless and living in them encampments have to live in, whether what is, so, I mean, the city has been, or not the city, because it's hard to go past it and not see it. So I'm a little concerned that, you know, that, I, I, I'm concerned and want to know how do, I want to see the plan for, that's gonna pop up in 30 days, and how do we keep it? The jungle has been there since I moved there. And somebody, anyway, and that's just, okay, so I'm gonna leave that alone because I think I know that this city means well, and I know that y'all nev, don't want to see people suffering the way the people are suffering over that, us living in them encampments, but also the people to Nate Florals that, that live over in that area. And those who, but, but my next thing about this, uh, graft or the, um, thing that you put up there, and I just want to have a little more clarity about what do you mean by, um, immediately contacting police? And, and do you have a stage of what that means and how that's gonna happen?
Aldo Person, are you referencing the private property section for the trespassing?
No, I don't think that, let me, let me try to take. I think I know what you're talking about. Let me, let me take your, the first piece of what you said. So I just want to clarify, the notice of violation was for that tiny slice of land that's in the inlet that no one's really living there. Um, so there wasn't any relocation that was needed, and we have 30 days to work with the railroad and community, community partners to put a proposal together to figure out what we're gonna do with that space, not 30 days to clean it up. So just to clarify those, to, just to make sure that we're.
Worse.
I just want to make sure we're, we're saying the, the things the way that they, that they are. So it's not 30 days to clean it up. That doesn't mean we're not going to do everything that we can in order to clean. We have to work with the railroad and we have to work with some community partners. So just, just so we're all clear, it's, it wasn't 30 days. Where you see the police will be contacted immediately, it only says if at any point there appears to be immediate safety concerns for site resident staff, community partners, representatives, or the public. So that is not, um, any part of the process. It is just like it, we have actually had it happen where someone from one of the service agencies has, has said, I no longer feel comfortable doing this without support. So something like that. Or if something starts to occur where it is now an unsafe situation for whoever may be involved, we're just being very upfront that there may be on occasion a law enforcement presence based on extenuating circumstances that are pub, you know, that become a threat to public safety. That's the only reason.
You cleared it up. Cause that's what, that was my concern. What do you consider, what would be considered, um, dangerous for someone, right? And you said it pretty much like health are threatened. Okay.
And we would, you know, if we are working with community partners who would feel better about having someone, we also have a, an officer who's been on the team who has really longstanding relationships with some of the people in these spaces and has done some pretty incredible outreach, often on off time, often when he's not on duty. Make, checking on people and making sure they're okay. So there may be circumstances where we want, we want to make sure that when we're providing whatever support we can, that the people that are going in are people that people trust and that know that are there to keep them safe and to get them help. So.
One officer is not enough, but I do know some community members that are very connected to the encampments and the people in the encampment. So we could have more conversation around.
Right. So when we get to the phase two, this whole, all of these step one, two, three, four, five, six, blah, 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 for lightly managed, that is gonna, we are going to need to weave together a network of community services, trusted, you know, there are some people that don't have a label or a name or an organization, but are incredibly helpful and well-known to people who live there that might need to get connected to whatever we put together. So this response, encampment response person, it would be really critical for that person to keep a database of who those people are, how they can be contacted, when they would be available to help. So that would be another piece of the job of that encampment response person.
Next, I had Aldo Person Fabrizio.
Thank you so much for preparing this. This is like so very helpful, and I'm really encouraged that we are working closely with the county and that, um, I, it looks like our, I mean, I'm really happy to see that the, the city team seems like coordinated and talking and communicating with people. Um, I, I appreciate Phoebe's, um, comments about the fact that we're jumping into action, um, now, and, and I am also, you know, I'm sorry that, that we haven't gotten to this point sooner. But that said, I am glad that we are where we are at the moment. I do want to say that the city can't take on providing assistive housing for the entire county. Um, we are a really small city with very limited resources. And if we've heard it once, we've heard it a million times, we've heard it a lot again tonight. Ithaca has become a very unaffordable place for so many who are here, so many who are here. I, I'm talking about young professionals, families, unhoused, renters, retirees. Um, I don't know how many times we need to say this, but yes, to just echo what some of the people said earlier, the rents in Ithaca are far too high, and the taxes are far too high. And please, everybody understand that these are intricately connected. So if your rent's going up, you're, assume that your, um, landlord's property taxes just went up some extraordinary amount. The assessments in the city.
Aldo Person, I apologize. Is this Jermaine?
It is.
Okay.
The assessments in the city have gone up over, over 20%. That translates to, um, you know, for many property owners, that means if the tax rates stay the same, the way they are right now, they will owe thousands more dollars just next year, one year alone. So my point is really this, we are a city, we are connected to a broader base of support within the county, and we need to absolutely utilize every single connection that we, and every single partnership that we can. And we need to actually even envision more because I, I actually don't support hiring another person, um, to coordinate this. I think that we can't keep adding people every time we come up with a thing that we want to do. And we've already seen even just these few months of being on council, we've seen this already, uh, many, many times. So I would say, I would like to ask that we work really closely with our partners and envision how um, there might be someone who's already in this team of people who would be working, um, with this constituency to figure out how something can be restructured, how, how they would be able to help with this, and potentially if there's some restructuring that we could do within our own city staff to create some bandwidth to, to be able to help with a piece of it. I do not support, like, every time we have a new service needing to add another thing to our budget.
Aldo Person Kumar, uh, as you have not spoken yet on this issue, I'll put you ahead of the repeats, so you might be recognized. Um, I have myself next, and then Aldo Person Keel. I, I hear, uh, so one, um, I'll, I'll give myself an indulgence and just remind council that, uh, council is council. Um, the membership may change, but they, an act of council is an act of council. And, uh, that does not change based on who are in the seats until a policy is overturned. Focusing on the element of, uh, cleanups. Mike, I was just wondering if for council and the public's edification, you could just talk about some of the other times we've done cleanups? And how durable those have been absent a larger solution to the problem facing our unhoused community?
Sure. So, uh, part of the, um, part of the difficulty in cleanups is, is just getting people to move out. And, uh, until now, uh, we haven't had a, a, a protocol for addressing that. And so that's what is being presented tonight. And last year, we tried to come up with some sort of protocol, and it just, I think it just got punted down the road a little bit. So that's, that's part of it. But, uh, the, you know, one of the most difficult pieces is just getting people out of those areas. And so, um, we've done this, um, let's see, at the end of Cherry Street a few years ago, um, we did have a number of the outreach workers and, and various nonprofits go out and let people know that they need to move. And when they did so, and once they moved, uh, D P W had staff available. It was, uh, winter where we didn't have a lot of snow, and so a lot of our plow drivers had, uh, time to do that. And we were able to build an access road out there at the end of, um, Cherry Street and do a bit of the cleanup. But it was a couple of weeks of work. We've done the same thing out at Southwest Park. There are a number of people living out in Southwest Park, but we were able to build a road that police or fire or ambulance can access. Also, uh, tried to keep up with the amount of debris that fills up out there. We've provided a dumpster and, we have a, an equipment operator out there at Southwest almost all the time, just managing the spoils pile, but uh, when he has some free time, he will try to pile up garbage so that it's easier for us to clean up. So Southwest is not too bad. Uh, the peninsula, which is the area right next to the new Brinley Street Bridge, we had a lot of difficulty with that because we had about 20 or so tents. It was an active campsite. And, uh, when Code Blue went into, into effect, most of those campers left, but there was that one uh, really messy, um, campsite, sort of at the tip of, we, we call it the peninsula. It's between two ditches or flood relief channels. Uh, it burned down, the person moved out, we went right in and cleaned it up. So the difficulty in this whole thing is not so much the cleanup, it's the making sure people are moved out of there. And that's, that's a harder task than it sounds like. So, um, we're jumping on this railroad property because, uh, the police officer that we were talking about before has done some groundwork, um, letting people know that they need to move out of here. Um, because we are getting complaints from the D E C and, uh, Tompkins County Health. And, uh, that was very effective. A lot of people left. There's still a lot of people who hang out during the daytime, but they're not camping there. There's still a lot of people who hang out during the daytime, but they're not camping there overnight. And so we're gonna take this opportunity to fence it off so that more debris can't get in there. Uh, we know that garbage is flowing into the creeks. That's one of the concerns of Tompkins County Health and the DEC. We're working on a plan to address that, but um i- it's gonna take some time. So we do have thirty days to come up with a plan. Um, it may be the end of this year before we actually clean all of it up. But we hope to have some people out there at least sorting, um, sorting into more manageable piles. And also if we have people out there working even a little bit, I think that's gonna be a deterrent for anybody trying to get in. That along with a fence whenever we're able to put that in. All this stuff does cost money though. Um, I've just been trying to work out some budgetary figures for the uh railroad property. With the fence, the tree clearing, any requirements that the DEC might add to um doing this. We have needles, we have propane tanks, so it's not just garbage. We have to treat some of this uh delicately. And um, but my rough order of magnitude cost right now is uh anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand just for that uh property out there. And it'll probably take us uh till the, probably until December, possibly January of uh next year. We're, we have to wait for the lake levels to drop so that we can access some of the garbage that has fallen in uh right on the creek side. Just the sorting of materials is gonna take some time. Say we wanna um, you know, separate the metals, the propane tanks, and then just the regular garbage and stuff. So we can do it, but you know, this is, we can do it and you know, even if that number sounds a little bit high, it, it would be a lot higher if we had to hire a contractor. So with DPW staff going in there and doing that, that means there's a little bit less work that gets done on our infrastructure within the city. So there's a little bit of a trade-off there.
And just before I reckon, thank you very much, Mike. Before I recognize all the person Keel. Um, many, if not all of those funds should already be incorporated into existing budget, correct? This is not an above, above and beyond ask?
Right, I believe uh over the last two years, I think a hundred thousand dollars was budgeted one year, a hundred and fifty the, the following year. I think we spent uh, I'll have to double check with the controller's office, but in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars. So once this cleanup's done, we may be hovering around a hundred thousand dollars left, maybe a little more or less.
Thanks, Mike. All the person Keel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for your, your previous comments. Um, I have done a lot of research on this topic and from what I have seen, I really believe that in Ithaca, we actually have two bottlenecks. Um, I'm, I kind of reject the hypothesis of um housing first is the only approach. I think housing first is important. I think building more housing is really important. However, I do think that there's a second bottleneck between unsheltered and sheltered, right? We have unsheltered people, we have sheltered people who are in emergency housing, and then we have housed people. Um, we are not doing enough. Uh, I, I would put that under the, the sheltered category generally, um, but thank you, yes. We are not doing enough to increase our emergency housing stock to make sure that the people are baseline level sheltered, right? We are actively doing things to remove people from areas where they are without any availability to go anywhere else. A lot of people don't have connections here. You know, I've talked about this at council meetings before, but like they, they put up forty-four new units of emergency housing in Atlanta in five months, five months. Um, and we could do that in Ithaca, right? We could do that and it is part of our jobs to be thinking about those things and pushing for them. I also completely reject the idea that we can, should just write off ideas outright without any cost benefit analysis of whether it would be actually fiscally responsible or financially feasible, right? Like saying like, oh, we're just not gonna add any new services because it's not financially feasible without doing any cost modeling, any cost benefit analysis, any externality studies, I think is ridiculous. Um, you know, I've also talked about ambulance services in Ithaca. That's another example of a, a moment where in, you know, some of my colleagues have completely written off things without doing any cost benefit analysis on whether it would be actually financially feasible. We're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just this year to clean up this property, right? Hundred and fifty thousand dollars just this year to clean up this property and that's not accounting for any costs we're gonna spend in the future. And if we weren't having to do that, we could be investing that money into, into emergency housing stock for our people. But instead, we're just gonna have to continually keep, you know, spending money on cleaning up um places without actually investing money. We're spending millions of dollars on a new fire station, millions of dollars. And I think we should be spending millions of dollars on that too, but I just think that we could be spending millions of dollars also um on emergency housing stock.
All right, seeing no further comments, um, I'll again thank the city manager uh and staff for their uh presentation this evening and we'll go ahead and turn towards our final item. So thank you, Mike and Lisa. Nels, you can stay. All the person Shapiro, did you have a quick, quick question? I couldn't tell if that was a hand. I thought you.
It wasn't a quick question. I'll, I'll, I'll table it.
Okay. I couldn't tell if you were just waving or if you had a hand up. You got a, I got a lot of these kind of votes from you over there, so. Um, so this uh I suspect could be very brief. I will uh, uh ask Nels if there's any uh preliminary comments he'd like to share about the Restore New York uh eight uh grant application. There was information uh disseminated by uh, both by him as well as the council by myself earlier today uh clarifying uh some of the outstanding questions, but Nels, anything that you'd like to?
Just a real quick background on the program. The uh Restore New York program is designed to uh address vacant buildings or condemned buildings. Uh, typical uses are demolition followed by rehab or demolition followed by reconstruction, uh sometimes in separate phases. It's not eligible for public buildings uh that are used for government purposes. If the city had owned a condemned property, um, it would be eligible to address that in some ways, but we don't have any of those properties. Uh, and it's not eligible for greenfields or properties that, that don't have any structures on them at all. So it's a program that is competitive, uh and uh pretty highly competitive, but a great program because it provides resources that give us a wide variety of, of uh uh eligible uses for the program that are not typically eligible in other programs. It can be affordable, you can have affordable housing, but you're not mandated to have affordable housing in the program. And because it's competitive, we, when we looked at the proposals we received, we tried to rank them based on what would score highest in the, by the state's scoring standards, which are very focused on increasing housing supply, increasing tax base and utilizing other state programs, leveraging other state programs. So that's why we brought forward the, our preferred choice recommended to the mayor is the um, the Ironworks Building uh to create twenty-four housing units on a property that, that would involve demolition of two bu, two vacant buildings on the nine hundred block of West State Street. Um, the challenge with that one is financial feasibility. Uh, the restore program can provide up to one point eight million dollars about for that project, but um that may or may not be enough to make that project financially feasible. So we, we wanna make sure that there was a second project in the queue that's eligible for assistance if this one proves not to be eligible. And that's the Waters Edge Project, which is the former DOT property next to the farmer's market. They're providing, they're proposing ultimately four to five hundred housing units there. But their proposal was to demolish the existing DOT structures that are on the site to get the site ready for future housing development. So the approach we're taking is to go through the process and hope that everything works out for the first choice project because you can only submit one application um for the, for the, for twenty-four unit housing project. Yet for some reason that turns out not to be financially feasible, I'd be coming back to you again with another public hearing for the second choice project. Um, the deadline is May twenty-second for the application.
And Nels, just, I'll just add again, in the information that you provided that I disseminated, but just in case colleagues weren't able to see it today, they might have questions in their mind about the differential between twenty-four and three to four hundred. Um, I'll just note right in the application for the one that was recommended, uh, one hundred percent of those units in the application packet are marked as below market rental with an average of fifty-three percent area median income. Any questions for Nels on this? All the person Brown and then all the person Montos.
Go ahead, Kayla. When will we know that this application is the one that you're a hundred percent going to be submitting?
Um, they're working on modeling and lining up financing now. Um, it's really more tied to whether they can secure the financing to help with the project. Uh, um, I think it's clearly, clearly, clearly gonna score the best of the two projects, um, but only if it's financially feasible. So um, we would have to provide at least a minimum of a three-day legal notice for another public hearing to be held before a, a resolution passed by the council. So you know, in theory, it could be pa, pushed back into May sometime, but really we need a decision in the month of April, I think.
All the person Brown.
I'm kinda, I'm kinda confused here. Um, no, I, I forgot my question. Um, it was pretty much about, about the um twenty-four unit, no, no, the four units. And I wanna see, I mean, for four units, how would that benefit the city? I mean, people, could you talking about uh tearing something down for only four units?
No, it would be two buildings demolished and, and its place, it would be a twenty-four unit project built with ground floor parking. So it'd be three levels of housing above parking on the site. That's the proposal.
Which, which one is that?
That's the one on the nine hundred uh west, nine hundred block of West State Street, Ishka Alpern's project.
Yeah, I like that, but the other one you talked about, if this one don't go through.
Right.
I think you said it would be only four units.
No, no, four hundred units.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a very large scale project, um, which, which would score well with the state for that purpose, but it's still just a straight demolition project with no pru, no, they don't have to actually build the housing in that first phase.
So you couldn't do them both?
All the person, just into, all the person, just into the microphone. No, no, just into the microphone, please, for, for uh recording purposes. All the person Fabrizio?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a little more about the financial feasibility. So um, would this project likely require um a tax abatement to make it possible?
You know, there's, there's, there's a couple of aspects to the financial feasibility. One is getting enough funding to build the project and then secondly, looking at the operating cost to service the debt service. And that's where the tax bill would come in, whether there's enough income being generated to pay off, pay the, the bank loan essentially on the project. Cause essentially the affordable housing doesn't usually pay for itself um with, with enough resources to pay back the full cost of construction. So it is a challenge. Um, that would be, that would have to come back for, for another approval. We can't, right now, I can't tell you yes or no whether it would. It's not modeled into the project currently, but there may, but in, and tax assessments do take into account that there's lower income generated with an affordable housing project. So it wouldn't generate the same per unit tax revenue that a market rate project would generate in the first place. And so um, if it's regulated as this one would be for a thirty-year regulatory period, there would be a reduced assessment put on the property for that purpose as well, so.
Not for the entire thirty years, though?
Um, it would recognize the limited income that the project would be generating.
If there are for no further questions, uh, at this time, what I would ask for is a motion to send this to consent agenda for the May first meeting with the understanding that on recommendation from staff, I may pull this if we have to have another public hearing uh and, and go with the alternative project. So at this time, I'd like to entertain the motion. All the person Kumar, second by all the person Shapiro, all those in favor of the motion? That carries ten zero. Thanks, Nels. We are almost concluded with business. I would just, uh, I received a flyer from uh planning staff. I just wanted to share that next Saturday, April twentieth is in Earth Day Festival on the Ithaca Commons from twelve to five P M. In Earth Day Festival, there is, and I am reading directly from the uh flyer here, puppet theater, free raffles, live music, games, food, electric tailgate party, electric car and e-bike show, and perhaps most importantly, good vibes. Twelve to five. Uh, with that, unless there are any other uh time sensitive announcements, all the person Saint Perez. Uh, I will understand the motion to adjourn, all the person Saint Perez, second by all the person Win, all those in favor of adjourning. And that is ten zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, colleagues.